All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Jen. I'd like to call the December 8th, 2025 Town Council meeting to order. If we could all stand and begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And Margaret, if you would call the roll, please.
Mike Boswell.
Here.
Mary Isaac.
Here.
Stevens Spillane.
Here.
Bill Mecca.
Here.
Anne Sather.
Here.
Jennifer Winchell.
Here.
Christine Elarice.
Here.
Richard Wolf.
Here.
Jason Marsh.
Here.
Anthony Dorsey.
Here.
Ashley Guardiano.
Here.
Carl Masaro. John Foreman.
Here.
Thomas Broderick.
Here.
Matt Dunn.
Here.
Joey Cologne.
Here.
Brian Walsh.
Here.
Kelly Malazi.
Here.
Tony Cinto. Jared Ferrari.
Here.
And Nicole Satin.
Here.
Thank you. Just a quick congratulations to everyone once again. Glad to be here with all of you this evening. We are going to begin with public comment. All comments must be directly related to items on this evening's agenda and limited to about two minutes. So if anybody would like to speak at public comment, they can do so now. Any takers this evening? All right, we will keep on moving, and I apologize, it is hot and then cold in here and hot again, so hang in there, folks. We are going to move right into our resolutions this evening, starting with Resolution TC 31-01. Councilman Satin, would you bring that to the floor, please?
Sure. Resolution TC 31-01, be it resolved that Nathan Tinker is hereby appointed as an alternate member of the Board of Finance for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2028, and he'll be appointed to Christine Elarice.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Tinker, would you come to the podium this evening? How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good.
Green light, there we go.
Green light. Would you mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Nathan Tinker, T-I-N-K-E-R. My address is 23 Cottage Place here in Trumbull.
Thank you. And Mr. Tinker, can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving?
Sure. So I really find the Board of Finance to be an important part of, a key part of how the local government works. And I've always been interested in taking part in local government at this sort of level. My background is in association management and finance around that and so forth. And I have been, I'm currently the CEO of the Connecticut Pharmacists Association. Previous to that, I've been head of the New York Biotechnology Association and the Staben Vaccine Institute Cancer Vaccine Consortium, all of which required an enormous amount of grant writing and financial management and that sort of thing. So happy to be here, excited to have this opportunity, hope I can do some good with the town.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Tinker? All right. Thank you very much. All in favor of this resolution? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Congratulations. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We appreciate that. We're going to move right along to TC 31-02. Councilman Sather, would you bring that to the floor, please?
Certainly. Resolution TC 31-02, be it resolved that an arbitration award received by the Trumbull Town Clerk on November 14th, 2025 between the Trumbull Board of Education and the Trumbull Education Association, the TEA, beginning July 1, 2026, and ending June 30th, 2029, is hereby rejected.
And do I have a second? Councilman Boswell, thank you. So in front of us tonight is the arbitration award, certainly, for the teacher's contract. We have 30 days from the time the award is submitted to the Town Clerk, which was November 14th, to take action in the form of rejecting the award. If we do nothing, it's automatically accepted. The resolution on the floor, and I just want to call this out because it's important, the resolution on the floor is to actually reject the award, which would send it back to arbitration. We have the Town's HR Director, Tom McCarthy, with us. We have Superintendent Dr. Semmel with us this evening, and we do have some members of the Board of Education in the audience as well. I believe we can do general questions about this.
Just a clarification. You said rejecting it sends it back to arbitration? That's incorrect.
The resolution on the agenda is to reject. So if we vote yes...
It rejects it. Okay.
It sends it back for arbitration.
If I may, this is statutorily based, so they tell us this is how the resolution should be. So if you vote no tonight, you're accepting this contract as is. If you vote yes, you're rejecting this contract, and it will go to, it won't go back to, it will go to binding arbitration. And also, you do not have to vote at all. But if you do not vote tonight, if you table this, and the time goes past the 30 days, then it automatically becomes a contract.
Right. So we've brought it before us tonight in order for the council to be informed and aware of what the agreement is, and for the opportunity to ask any questions that we wish of those who are in attendance and more expert on this than I am. But we certainly don't have to take any action. So general questions this evening can be done in public session. If we have specific questions that Attorney Shopek will tell us, we are in the gray zone, we will have to go into a non-meeting in order to ask those questions. But we'll start with an overarching, you know, summary, Tom, if that's okay.
And if I may, just to clarify why this is different, because this has to be, the contract has to be registered with the Town Clerk's office. So the actual collective bargaining agreement is already a public document, which is why it's different than when I come to you every other time. For the folks that are new, generally when I come here with a collective bargaining agreement, we have not made that a public document yet, and so we go into what we call a non-meeting, which is kind of like an executive session, but it really just isn't a meeting. And so we close the doors, essentially throw everybody else out of the room, and then we have a private discussion about it. That, it's different tonight because the actual collective bargaining agreement has been made public already. But we still need, if there will be discussions about the content that's more than just what's in it in the collective bargaining agreement, then we would have to go into a non-meeting, which would require a vote in throwing everybody out of the room. Yes?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So go ahead, Tom.
So just to, I did not negotiate this contract. This was negotiated by the Board of Education. Floyd Dugus is the outside counsel that does the negotiations. Floyd is an incredibly good lawyer. I use Floyd as well for our stuff. Floyd never goes on vacation, and Floyd is on vacation. And so this is just one of those times that time did not work well. So Floyd reached out and asked if I would come in here and pinch hit. And we have the superintendent, because I didn't negotiate it, I don't know a lot of the details other than what has been told to me. So if you have questions about that, the superintendent, I'm sure, could be very helpful. But again, remember, if we go into any kind of detail other than what is actually in the document, we'll have to go into a non-meeting. Okay. So as I gave everybody this document, this is essentially the executive summary that Floyd has given. And I think the message that I think everybody wants to be heard tonight is, if you look at number two on the first page, the second line, as you can see, the four-year cost of the Trumbull Teacher Settlement is 12.82% with step movement. The state average to date is 13.04. So I think the message that they want you to hear is that it is slightly below what the increase is for the statewide average. And if you see this document, the last bunch of pages is every single contract that has been settled for teachers throughout the state and broken down by county. So you can see yourself whether, you know, you think we are, you know, moving too fast or too slow, or right where we're supposed to be in terms of teachers. It is important for everyone to understand, for those who've never done this kind of stuff before, there's, when it comes to teachers, teachers have a lot of steps. That means that, you know, when you progress in your years of service to the Board of Education, every year you move up a step automatically. And what happens when you negotiate teachers' contracts generally is that you negotiate step movement, and it increases into the step movement. And so here you'll see that there's increase in the step movement. The best way to really think about this is to, is like what Floyd wrote in that line, is you think about the total value of the package. Because there's a, if you tried to get into the nitty-gritty of where everybody's steps are and who makes out, who doesn't make out better, it becomes very complicated very quickly because there's a lot of steps. So you'd have to really look at how many teachers are on this step, how many teachers are on that step. And that is a very hard thing to grasp in a quick meeting like tonight. So that's why I encourage you all just to rely on the overall percentage number for the increase. If you want to go to page three of the document I handed out, you will see the wages by the years. The contract is from July 1, 2026, to June 30, 2029. This is also a difference with how we do contracting on the town side. Contracting on the town side is a little bit looser, and by state law, meaning that we sometimes go past the expiration dates, and we're still negotiating. That is generally not allowed for Boards of Education. They're required by state law to be negotiating way before your deadline. And if you don't negotiate by the deadline and get an agreement, then you're required to move into probably a mediation step first, right? And then there's, then binding arbitration. So they're always before, way before their deadlines because the law requires them to be that. Just for the teachers and administrators, that's right. Only for certified teachers and certified administrators. Okay. So if you look at that, it is a little bit of a complicated thing, like I said before, of which steps are getting which increases. You're getting a 1.5% in year 26, 27, which is only for steps four through 20. And then, and then anybody in the top step would not move. That's why I said to you, really just concentrate on what the base total number is. And 26 to 27 is a 4.23%. If you, if you're comparing it to town side, those are bigger numbers than we generally would have on our side. But teachers with their step movements generally are a higher number than what we would give on our side because we generally don't have as many steps as teachers do. So a lot of that number is, is really, goes back to the number of steps that are, that created in Board of Ed teacher contracts. So year two, 27, 28, a 4.25%, 28, 29, a 4.35%. They also are increasing stipends, coaches, drama coaches, that kind of stuff, by 2.75%, which, by the way, is what the number that we're generally negotiating on the town side. This, that, so that is a cost. This next thing is actually a savings to the town and the Board of Ed, and that is the insurance premium cost. That is the percentage of, that the employee would pay and contribute to their medical benefits. And remember, we have the state partnership plan. So we have a, essentially a funded insurance plan that is run by the state of Connecticut. The town has it, and the Board of Ed has it. And so right now, they're paying, I don't know, is it 22%? Are they moving from, yeah, it's currently 22. And yet they're moving up 0.5 over the three years, each of those years, actually, two of those years, and they're moving up to 23%. So that's increasing the amount of money that the employee will contribute to their health benefits. So that is actually a positive for the town's financials. So it looks like, it seems to me like Article 4, Section 2, which is the page two, the next page of that document I've just given you, change facilitator stipends from a flat fee to a per-session fee, no payment, session is canceled. I assume that's a Board of Ed win because it allows for them to not have to pay for cancellations, right? Yep. I assume that's what it is. I also assume that's probably not a big, huge number.
It was $500 for the whole 10 sessions, and it's $50 for per session.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's not a make or break kind of thing, but it's a positive for the Board of Ed to give them more flexibility. After that, Article 8, the, so it looks, it looks like that there was a, they were allowing people to take 10 days off for free without charging any of your accumulated time for a family health emergency. And so they have, they have changed that to at least that you get, you have to use your sick time in order to do that. So that, it is very reasonable that people are allowed to use the sick time for family health emergencies, and the law, FMLA, and stuff allows for that. And so what they're doing, that was actually, it looks like a positive for the Board of Ed, that at least there's now a control there in terms of having to use the sick time for that. B, 8B, personal days were increased from three to four. You know, the, that is the world that everybody lives in, in municipalities, so three personal days, four personal days. So that is, that doesn't seem like a big deal in my world, but it is giving an extra personal day. There are restrictions on how you can use the personal day. If everybody, I hope everybody got the, what the red line is, it actually is blue line, but the red line contract, which shows you the actual changes. Overall, there were not a lot of changes in this contract. This is really mostly a dollars contract, that's the way I would interpret this. But they did make some changes in terms of how folks can use their personal days. Like, for instance, you can't take more than two in a row without specific permission, that kind of stuff. So in increasing that one day, they also put in controls that I think are helpful to them. And, and there seems to be a little more discretion in that Appendix B in terms of posting stipended positions. That, folks, is the ballgame. There's not a lot here. It's dollars. And I want to remind everybody that, again, so you have 30 days, so you cannot vote, and it will become a contract. You can vote yes, and it will be rejected, and it will not be a contract, and it will go to binding arbitration. You can vote no, and it will be accepted as a contract. Those are your three options.
And we'll do that one more time right before we vote, as a reminder.
Yes.
Dr. Semmel, is there anything you wanted to add, or?
I think I would just add a little clarity around the sick days for family illness. In the original contract, when I first arrived, there's, by state statute, teachers and administrators get 15 sick days per year added to their sick day allowance. The Trumbull teacher contract also allowed for 10 additional family illness days outside of those 15. So this was actually a huge win for us to eliminate those 10 days and add them as being taken from the sick bank. So that actually was probably the biggest thing. We were trying to work with the teachers to remove that piece of the contract. And in order to make that happen, we did move from the three personal days to the four personal days because, again, working with Attorney Dugus, four personal days in a teacher contract is not unheard of. In fact, it's generally the practice to have four personal days. So we feel like this was a very big win for us. The rest, I think, is pretty clear in terms of what Tom was mentioning, in terms of the increases to salaries. The only thing I would also add, though, is that when you do have a teacher contract, who, teachers go by step. There's 17 steps for a teacher to get to their top step, and many of them start earning $50,000 a year or so when they first start. So when we talk about having a 4% increase, starting at $50,000 with a master's degree is not necessarily a high point. So moving up those steps each year gets them closer and closer to what is a reasonable salary for someone of this professional stature.
Thank you. All right, we will take any questions. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you both for, thank you both for walking through the contract. And this is just for education, for myself, the steps. Once this contract is, if this contract is approved, do teachers automatically every year move to a different step, or is there some boundaries of how to move from step four to step five, as an example?
The way this contract is written, there's, there's no parameters to it. You move to the next step the very next year.
We'll go Councilman Cinto and then Councilman Marsh.
Okay, I have like four questions, but I'll just do a couple at a time. All right. Let's start with, what's the cost per year, we'll start with this one first of all. How many teachers are between step four and step 20?
I don't have that with me today.
You don't have that?
No, I don't have that. I would say, if I remember from the negotiations conversation, we have at least half of our teachers on top step. So we would have, with that in mind, you have about 300 teachers between step four and 20.
Okay, and those teachers would get a 4.2, 3% raise every year with a three-year contract?
They would get their 1.5% increase, GWI increase, plus their step, which turns out to be that...
4.23.
4.23, and the other numbers that are listed.
Okay. Now, what's the cost per year of the increases in dollars?
I didn't bring that information with me either. It would be 4.2% of whatever our, I could pull up my budget, it'd be 4.23%
Of 100 million?
Of our, no, of the salary portion of our budget.
Which is about, what, 80% of the budget?
80% usually represents the salary and the benefits. So it's usually about 65% of the budget, so whatever 65% of $130 million is, it'd be 4.23% on top of that.
Okay.
So easy math, but I just don't have that in front of me.
Okay. And let me get this, on page 13, sick leave. Your teachers can accumulate 190 sick days over their time, correct?
Yep. I believe that's accurate, yep.
And plus, in the old contract, they had an extra 10 days that you guys took away. Plus, they get 15 sick days per year.
That, that's the 15 that goes towards that 190.
So a teacher could have 100 sick days, and then you guys give them 10 more on top of that?
That's state statute. It's actually 15. So every, every district in the state of Connecticut has to do that by Connecticut general statute.
Okay. Last question is this one. I don't know if anybody's ever asked this question before. Where I work, I have to, on certain things, recuse myself on certain items when doing this particular town council job. I was trying to find, on your thing here, if you work for the town, I mean, if you work for the school, are you, are you, I mean, Dan Shopek can answer this question, are you allowed to vote on your own salary increase?
Councilman Cinto, do you mean within council members sitting here this evening?
Yes.
I believe that the three teachers who work for Trumbull Public Schools will be abstaining this evening from any vote.
If I could, I think the three teachers need to identify themselves as members of the union and should really not be sitting up here during the course of the conversation.
Can they remain sitting and just not speak?
Yes.
Okay. So our three employed teachers are Councilman Spillane, Councilman Winchell, and over on the other side, sorry, Councilman Mecca, are the teachers who are employed within the Trumbull Public School system. And then, Councilman Boswell, do you feel...
Yeah, I mean, my spouse is, so I would, I should probably join them, I would think. I don't know.
Attorney Shopek?
Question being, members of the union, it's not a question of being employed by the, by the Trumbull Public Schools.
Okay, member of the union.
If you're directly affected by this contract, then you're refused from participation.
The three of them are, it sounds like, Councilman Boswell, you're okay. I think it's fine that you remain sitting there as long as they're not asking questions.
Well, they've, yes, that's fine, as long as they've said that they're not going to vote.
Yeah, there was, there was never an intention to vote. Councilman Marsh.
Thank you. Just generally speaking, the increases that are coming to us from the non-binding arbitration, if this went to binding arbitration, I'm assuming it's safe to say that we would expect to do worse in coming out of binding arbitration.
I would suggest, yeah, that would likely be true. I actually had seen an article that there was three state unions who went to binding arbitration recently, and their award was 4.5%. So I thought that was an interest, that was maybe in the last couple of weeks that I saw from the Connecticut Mirror. I could never say exactly what would happen coming out of binding arbitration, but my assumption would be, and so is Attorney Dugus's perception from his years of experience, that we did well with this contract, and we'd likely do either at that level or worse in terms of cost to the town.
And for the benefit of Councilman Cinto, although math is not simple for me, I, back of the envelope, I think, based on the numbers of $130 million budget, 65% to salary, the step in year one would roughly equate to a $3.574 million increase in the budget, correct?
That sounds like a reasonable number.
Okay.
Yeah, in terms of what it would, what it would cost, yep. It's a big number. When I say reasonable, I just mean that sounds like a number that would make sense to me.
Councilman Cologne?
Hi there, through the chair. All of it sounds quite reasonable as an educator in Fairfield County myself. But I did want to ask a question, and just kind of for everyone else's benefit in the room. When we talk about reasonable and stored-up days, is it protocol, because I'm pretty sure it is in most of Fairfield County, that when a teacher has maternity leave, they have to have the days stored up, or they don't get paid? Is that accurate for Trumbull as well?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted everyone, as we count up these days that the teachers have, all of the female teachers who decide to have kids, they lose them. Thank you.
Additional questions? Comments?
I am going to join them, Sheriff Guardiano, because I actually am on my wife's insurance plan.
Thank you. All right. Additional questions, comments? All right. Mr. McCarthy, will you remind everybody one more time?
One more time.
How the vote?
A yes vote kills the contract and sends it to binding arbitration. A no vote accepts the contract, and it becomes an official contract with the town. Not voting at all after the 30-day time limit will allow the contract to become a contract. Those are your three options. So yes kills, no passes, or ignore it, and it passes.
Does everyone understand that? If you want to, if you want to reject it and send it back, you vote yes. If you want it to stand as is, you vote no.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So all in favor?
Of rejecting it.
Of rejecting this, raise your hand. Okay. All opposed, this is a no vote, all opposed?
To accept the contract.
Yes, please raise your hand. Okay. Any abstentions? So Steve, Jen, Mike, and Bill. So the contract, the resolution fails, and the contract stands. Thank you very much.
And everybody can keep the documents because they're public, so.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Semmel. All right, we are going to move along to Resolution 31-03. Councilman Cologne, would you bring that to the floor, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Resolution TC 31-03, be it resolved that the Honorable Vicky A. Tesoro, First Selectman, is hereby authorized to sign the agreement entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Rights-of-Way Projects.
Second.
Thank you. Attorney Shopek, are you speaking to this this evening? Mr. Mauer, how are you this evening?
Very good, thank you.
Could you explain what's in front of us, please?
Well, the document in front of you is basically the same one that we did for the construction and for the design portion of the State of Connecticut support for the design, construction. And now this is for the rights-of-way, the Master Municipal Agreement.
Okay. Are there specific questions on this agreement for Mr. Mauer? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. All right, and that brings us to our fourth resolution. Councilman Dorsey, would you bring TC 31-04 to the floor, please?
Certainly. Resolution TC 31-04, be it resolved that the five-year plan is hereby approved.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Malazie. All right, so, this evening, we have the five-year capital improvement plan for the town. Just a reminder that this is not a funding plan, right? We are not authorizing any bonding this evening or expenditures of any dollars. We're looking at kind of a big wish list or vision for capital projects. Actual project funding will come before the Board of Finance in the one-year plan, and then before us following the Board of Finance vote. So this evening, we're just talking at a high level about projects that the town wishes to do, has on, on their radar for the next five years. We will go through section by section, take any questions, do any motions at that point. And we have a handful of people here this evening. We have Kevin Deon from the Board of Education, and again, Dr. Semmel, we have George Estrada here, and then we've got, who do we have? We have Rich and Bill, and Aaron here this evening, and Dimitri's here. We've got Chief Bassett here, so if there are questions as we go through this, we have lots of folks who can speak to them. And so, we will start with the Board of Education. And so, Mr. Deon and George, you want to stay seated for a minute, or you want to, you want to let them lead the Board of Ed? All right. How are you, Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
I'm good.
George can sit for as long as he can on this one. Thank you for being here. There's obviously a lot in here, and so what I think I'd ask is, you know, highlight anything that you feel really strongly about highlighting, and then we'll do questions from the council. So if there's any projects you specifically would like to call our attention to, please feel free to do so.
Sounds good. The first thing I'd like to mainly talk about is you look through the plan, you're going to see air handlers, RTUs, rooftop units, and you're going to see some air conditioning. As we know, air quality has become very important over the past, since COVID, but even prior to that, it was starting to ramp up. A lot of our units in our buildings are older. When we look at the ages of some of our buildings, you'll see in Middlebrook, and I'll get to that in a moment, but Middlebrook, the original unit is from 1952, and we have to replace the unit. It's actually built inside the gymnasium in a penthouse unit. So when you look at some of these projects, though, they look like we're just changing things out. We really need to make these changes, to make sure that the air change is over, we have good quality, and that we have air that's climate-controlled. I'm just going to go quickly by school and look at the larger projects. At Madison, it is, when you looked at the plan, the very top there is really going to be cooling. What you see below is there was a district plan that was done prior to my arrival, and we still follow that plan. So you will see a lot of items that are on there, such as changing of pipes, windows, and fascia that need to be corrected. That is from the recommendation from Techton, the architect that did the district master plan. So we, if you have any questions about those, we can discuss those, but you can see many of those are deferred into the later years of the plan. Currently in the 26, you'll see a lot of indoor air quality and some electrical. Going on to Middlebrook, again, I will talk about Gym Train Unit, that's very important. That's one of the original units in the, in the building. We have some carpet from the 1997 renovations. We have two tables, cafeteria tables. Cafeteria tables on their own are not a lot of money, but they usually are all bought together, especially with renovations. We have cafeteria tables in the district that are over 20 years old at Daniel's Farm and Tashua. There were over $40,000 to replace those, so that's a lot of money. That's why it's in the plan for, and they do last 20 years. The ones we currently have are 20 years, but they do need to be replaced. Daniel's Farm also has a generator. Last year, we came to talk about Tashua, this year is Daniel Farm. So we would like to replace the existing generator at Daniel's Farm. The elevator at Jane Ryan, you'll see some elevators. A lot of the elevators in the district are original to the building or were done in renovations that were in the 80s or the 90s. A lot of those components can no longer be found, there needs to be upgrades. Especially when you get to the high school, you'll see that we're looking to replace out the hydraulic unit to something more modern called a belt-driven unit. That will actually save some of the maintenance on it, but it is a $150,000 item. Frenchtown, we will work with highway and engineering, but we want to talk about the parking lot, making sure the drainage, some of the traffic flow. So we'd like to start a study there to take a look at how we can help with some of the drop-off and dismissal, some of the safety, and making sure that the parking lot doesn't flood. Also on there is another component regarding the high school. Last year, we came for Phase 1, we do have, did have flooding prior to my arrival, and we want to make sure that the drainage in the high school is adequate. Unfortunately, the costs went up from last year, and I can explain that further. We need an additional $650,000 to do Phase 1, which included putting a parking lot, additional parking. Right now, there is parking needs over at Hillcrest, we actually take some of the parking over at Hillcrest. So this plan was to put additional parking lot in the front of the building, and we can do a presentation, a little more detail if someone, I'm sure you're interested in it. But that's why you saw the additional amounts for the high school. So though Phase 1 wasn't started, the amount we're asking for this year is to complete Phase 1, start it this summer, as well as prepare for Phase 2 the following summer. We have chillers, there are chillers that are over 20 years old, two of them at the high school. They are aging out. We, last year, we came to talk about Voag AGSI. We had a chiller, we looked for a total replacement. We're actually able, because of the vendor that creates and makes those chillers, has a refurbishment program, so we were able to save $100,000 with the refurbishment program due to the age and the timing that we were able to get the chiller done. So we did that at AGSI. Well, both chillers over at the high school have reached that age as well. But if we don't move on that, then we may lose the refurbishment piece, which means having two whole new chillers put in, and then the codes and the requirements for chillers have changed, so there could be additional costs, so. That is a critical, we'd like to get those chillers refurbished.
Kevin, did we do the chillers when we did the high school renovation? Was that when we purchased those too, or was this from before that?
These were 2007, is from what we can see.
Councilman Marsh?
And with the refurbishment, what, how, how long does that extend the life of the chiller?
We'll get at least 15 years out of it, and we get workmanship warranties as well. So we get the one year across the board, plus we get other components. And again, they really gut the whole system, and they change out fans, compressors, everything. So it's, it's good, basically just keep the shell of the chiller, but because of the age and because of what they can do, and clean it out, it'll still hold those pressures, rather than putting in a whole new system. And again, at the bottom, you'll see some of our fleet. We have aging vehicles. We use, we like to get multi-uses out of our vehicles, so we plow our own driveways. So we have vehicles that our maintenance uses, but also those vehicles then sub as plows, which puts a lot of stress on the vehicles. We have vehicles from 2008 and 2012 that we're looking to replace that are resting out.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you for that. Why don't we start with, with Madison, whether there's any questions on Madison middle school? Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you. Quick question, under Frenchtown Elementary, looks like there's a $500,000 cost, I presume for study or some site, it says site exploratory evaluation, is that a study?
Correct, that's part of a study. Also, Bill likes to talk, there's additional drainage because that is a wet area.
Yeah.
So there is drainage around the property as well that needs, catch basins that need to be cleaned and reviewed and scoped, so that involved camera work as well as some of that, so.
So it's not just like a plan, just, is it developing a plan as well?
This is developing a plan as well as looking what's there and seeing what needs to be cleaned out.
So my, my final question is, why are we bonding studies? Well, shouldn't this be coming out of your budget? Like, the, the idea of a capital plan is to generate some action, parking lots, et cetera. Why are we, why are we essentially using a credit card to do a study?
Ultimately, it's all part of the plan, usually we use engineering firms as well, and Bill can speak more to that.
This is part of, part of the capital improvement is to do the study.
Bill, do you mind speaking into the mic?
I'm sorry.
So that, so that CCTV can pick it up, please?
So, part of the, part of the process is to do the investigations so that we can put together a proper plan. It's not a budget item, it's not part of an operating budget, it's part of an investment into capital.
Technically, as you're operating the site. So that, I think we're going to agree to disagree here, but I just don't understand why we would spend $500,000. I'm not saying you don't need to do it, I'm not saying why it's not built into your budget, and then the, once the plan comes in place, you could request a bonding for whatever the plan looks like.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Sutton.
I just have a question about HVAC in general, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. But that does not necessarily, I don't believe, mean that every time we're doing HVAC work that we're implementing or air conditioning in an environment. Is that correct, or how, how should we understand HVAC work?
Correct, HVAC is heating, one component, ventilation, and the air conditioning. So, when you say HVAC, if we do boiler work sometimes, with ducts, we have HVAC, even though it's not anything to do with cooling. So it's all those components, air handlers, you have air handlers on the roof that actually bring in the fresh air, your Univens bring in the fresh air, that's still considered ventilation. It falls in that realm, but it is not air conditioning.
Okay. Jumping just over to Long Hill, can you just talk a little bit about the flat roof replacement? I mean, I know we've talked for a while about the condition of the roof. Can you just speak both to that line and then, again, the next line, which technically says, "Design and replacement of HVAC and roof evaluation." So there's two roofing lines on there.
Correct. I'll speak to the line from the Board of Ed as far as the roof goes. The last renovation that was done in that building was 1985, that roof has been patched since. So we follow up on a lot, and I'll get more for this year, but last year, we spent over $40,000 just to keep the roof from leaking. This is to replace the roof. The other component, the second component, is a town project where they're looking to look at the whole HVAC system in that building. So that's why you'll see that, the roof is a component of it, the unit's around the roof, but it includes duct work, and actually, it's a much larger project. For the, the top project, for the Board of Ed side, we want to make sure that that envelope of that building is secure. And for the other project, that is a long-term project to redo the entire ventilation system and the roof systems in that building.
And so, I guess, not knowing enough about roofing and HVAC, how do those two fit together, right? So if we go and put a new roof on, and then we're going to go do more work to, I don't know, the HVAC system?
We would not put the roof on, so you're not going to put the roof on only to peel it off later or make modifications to it. But we have to do one or the other. Last year, we brought this same item up, and again, we didn't get funding for it. We have to bring it forward this year to make sure. Now, if we get the funding to go ahead with the other component, which is below it with the full HVAC and roof system review, and that's going to be funded for a much larger project, as you can see monetarily, then, yes, we would not do the roof. We would just roll that in, we would do another year of patchwork, come up with a better plan, and make sure that when we're done, we have a new ventilation system as well as brand-new roof.
Okay, that's helpful. So for tonight's sake, we can leave both as-is, but when this goes to the one-year plan for the Board of Finance, we don't need both line items in for capital year 2026, correct?
Correct, if, if the lower item, the more expensive items, was not going to be funded, then we have to do something, and we have to keep going forward with that proposal.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions on Board of Education, Councilman Cinto?
This question's from Maria. Maria, how much, just, so I got to remember. On the town side of the budget, we have bonded debt for the town and for the school. Board of Ed, correct, there's two separate line items for that?
On the town budget, we have the debt service on the town side, and then we have the debt service, we pay it on the town side as well, but it's in the line item for the education.
So what is the, do you know off the top of your head, how much, on the town side budget, on the town side, bonded debt is, how much for the Board of Ed?
I don't know off the top. I would have to look. The total or the yearly retirement?
Just, yeah, retirement, how much we're retiring in bonded debt this year?
It's between 13 and 14 million dollars.
For both?
For both.
Okay, so there's not like a separate for either one?
No.
All right.
It's segregated in the line item, but it, it's on the town side, really.
Okay.
Not on the Board of Ed.
All right, thanks.
Additional questions? Councilman El Aris, and then Councilman Isaac.
Just a quick question, did you, as a point of clarification for the high school, did you say a potential new parking lot in the front, or is it refurbishment of the parking lot? And then if it is new, where does that go? Is that just the grassy area that goes away and becomes paved?
Correct, one of the proposals that makes the most sense is to actually, where the hillside is, right? Basically, across from the main entrance to the school, in the hillside, there's the cutaway and put in a 72 parking, space parking lot. Through there, you'd be able to run the drainage too, so you're going to be able to have the catch basins, and you'll have the area, so it actually helps with drainage by doing that. It's not just additional parking, because as the water flows, that comes down off of Daniel's Farm, and it comes through the parking lot, you'd be able to, and again, the civil engineers can speak better to it. You'd actually be able to catch that water, slow that water down, and then move it as it goes into the back, the south side of the building. So it's a multipurpose parking lot.
Councilman Isaac?
Too short. For Frenchtown, the, you have the amount in for 86,000 for the, too small, for the sidewalk, but the backup is 65.8, so I'm just wondering if you maybe did a pull from above?
The 65, the 60, what's that?
65 looks like it's the cafeteria.
The 65.8 looked like the cafeteria, is that?
It's, yes, but it's also on sidewalk for the backup. So I just, whichever one is correct?
Take a look, 65.8 is the cafeteria. And again, that's a moisture barrier, we have an issue with the concrete, as we know that's a wet area. We do have moisture coming up, so if you go to the cafeteria floor, you'll see it bubbling, and that's just moisture, moisture degrading the glue, and we're starting to see some of the tiles cracking and lift. The sidewalk is the 86,000.
Okay, so the, the backup was.
Yeah, we'll have to correct.
Okay. And then AGSI, I believe Tony brought this up last year. You were going to be looking at the state perhaps giving some kind of a reimbursement or grant that you had to apply after the fact, and then you refurbished instead. But are there any opportunities, have you found out for the AGSI for any kind of grant?
We did not get any money from the state. We went, talked to the state, they did not approve any money for us.
Thank you. Try again.
We will. Never going to stop.
Councilman Sayder?
I just have a quick question, in terms of the, like, why it's listed in blue? That's simply because it's under Bill's jurisdiction as opposed to the Board of Ed? In like, when we talk about Daniel's Farm's paving and Frenchtown's paving, that's just, I just, I need to.
When you look at the paving, you'll see the engineering items.
So it's under his jurisdiction, and that's all?
It's a partnership.
Got it, okay, just making sure.
Color coding clarifications?
Color code, yes, exactly.
We had the same question earlier. Councilman Sutton?
To piggyback off of that, there is, what's the $600,000 that's in red, actually, for the parking lot construction in the bus garage, at the bus garage? Out of curiosity, wondering why that was in red?
So, I don't know why it's in red.
Oh, all right. Move on.
Okay. All right, any additional questions for the Board of Education? It sounds like we'll need some more detail on the 2.1 million for the Trumbull High School. Parking drainage and driveway alteration in advance of the one-year plan, and probably some additional information on the $500,000 related to Frenchtown Elementary and Councilman Dorsey's question, not for tonight, obviously, but for the one-year. There were also, right, I know we got a vehicle inventory. Can you just speak a little bit more? Can you just speak a little bit more to the two trucks that you're proposing replacing? There were a handful of things highlighted on this document. And I don't know what or why those were highlighted in particular. There's a bunch of things in orange on the fleet inventory.
Sure. The orange were the vehicles that they were looking at, that, again, this is the maintenance staff, and the vehicles that need replacement. Ultimately, the ones they replaced was a security truck, which I guess, from my understanding, was donated from one of the utility companies many years ago. And the electrician's truck. So, the orange, yeah, we will clean that up. Again, that was for them to make the decisions on which ones. The ones that will be replaced will be the 2008 GMC Sierra. That's number, or letter SG1. And then the other one is electrician's truck number 11, which is a 2012 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD. Those are the two that will be replaced with those two new trucks. And those are the worst of the fleet.
Okay. I'm sure that there will be additional questions on, and related to fleet when we get to the one-year plan. All right. Any additional questions for the Board of Education lines? Yes, Councilman Walsh?
So, I just have a quick question. Looking through the backup plan, there's estimates. There's only one estimate for everything. Is that just because this is to get the, you know, a number for this?
The capital plan, it hasn't been RFP'd out. We haven't, we haven't gotten any bids yet.
Councilman Isaac, one more question.
Just realizing, on, if you look at Tashua, so for install AC in classrooms with HVAC, are those the individual units that are put in the windows that you put around? I know Daniel's Farm, we always had, because they, the capacity for the electric couldn't support, but they had them in certain rooms.
As there's need, there's many needs to put units in a classroom, accommodations, both for student and staff. The window units, they're just not efficient. So, one of the plans to put air conditioning, get air conditioning in some of these rooms and be able to expand some of that air conditioning, is to put what you see as the split units. So, you'll see the Mitsubishi, the other vendors, a split, split unit. So, that is where you have the compressor outside and then it runs to two or three rooms based upon the tonnage. That's what these are. We're trying to get away from the window units. Because if you have them in so many rooms, it's hard to maintain those, hard to replace those. When you replace them, they're a different size. A lot of times, we'll have to cut out glass and put Plexi. It's just labor-intensive versus having a split unit outside. You'll see those big white boxes in many of our buildings. And then that can tend to allow, based on the size, to do two, two to four to five classrooms.
And we have the, the electric will sustain?
So, the buildings we're proposing will, yes. We're not, like Middlebrook, when they did all the work this summer, they had to do the transformer. That was major. These units are smaller. The current amperage in the building can support these. We can't go on forever like that, but it is a way to get air conditioning on a much more maintenance, lower-cost item for us.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Nothing else? Thank you both very much for being here. And Lisa, thank you for being here as well. I know Lucinda was, and Marie were here and left, so thank them. Have a good evening. All right, we are going to move along out of Board of Education and into roadways. Hi, George. George, anything on roadways you would like to highlight? And then we'll do questions.
Nothing, nothing to highlight. I think just as an overview or reminder, we, we engage an independent engineering firm that does a full assessment of every town road every three to five years. From that, they provide, they provide us the data, which we use to then boil down to develop the, and organize the plan as we present it to the council each year.
And George, for, for folks' sake, the streets listed, the roads listed here is just a plan, right? It is not hard and fast that if a street is listed here, it will get paved in the corresponding year, correct?
Exactly. We will, we will refine what will be paved each year when we provide the one-year funding plan. But there are years that, for instance, this year, we have, I believe it's five or six streets that are rolling over that were in the plan as year 25. But we basically ran out of time in '25 to effectively do them. Some of them are near schools and we avoid being anywhere near the schools when they open. So, we will basically complete the drainage, let them winter over, and then we come back. And they're the first streets that we pave the following year. So, this coming year in '26, we'll be paving several streets, about a half dozen streets, that were in the '25 plan and even one that was in an earlier plan that, that we arrive at now.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for George on roadways? Councilman Sinto and then Councilman El Aris.
Hey, George, how are you?
Good evening.
Hey, um, what's the status of Shawnee? You have it on the list for 2029? I heard the road's pretty bad. Just want to know what you guys are.
So, Shawnee, this, this year, we went into Shawnee and we did the shim coat to improve the drivability. But that's on '29 for actual construction. So, what we did there this year is really to stabilize it, to keep it safe. And then it will be completely redone, paved as the other streets around it. There's a group of streets that will all be paved. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Christine?
Hi there. So, George, my question is for my street, for my neighbors, Westfield Drive. No, Westfield was on the '26 and it has disappeared. But we did the, you guys did all of the drainage this year.
And those are streets that were on the 25-year, on the 25 list.
Okay.
We got, we're completing the drainage in the area and they'll, they'll be paved first this coming spring.
I wanted to confirm, just for my neighbors. Thanks.
Councilman Isaac?
Always. pavement preservation, we went from 150 to 500. Do you believe that you're going to be able to get all the paving done and that amount of preservation in the allotted time?
Yes. We, we actually had the benefit of the ARPA funding that the council supported us with two and a half years ago. So, the last two years, we, we didn't ask for a lot from bonding, but we averaged about $400,000 a year.
Okay.
So, we, we are very comfortable that we can, we can execute that, that project.
And then the process, I know it's kind of up and down. Some roads over by my area, where someone was complaining and I went and I thought it looked great. It's just, you know, not flat paved, which people are used to. But some other roads, I know there were some issues, you know, we're working with adding sand and this and that. And is that kind of figured out at this point where?
It's, we've had, we've had sections that we have done that we have, have not had a single comment or complaint. And we've had other sections that have had several comments or complaints in some cases. But again, the pavement preservation is really just to hold the integrity of the road, to extend the life of what we have, so that we could catch up on the Shawnees that are falling, they're disintegrating. We have, and we have those patches throughout town. We have many patches of roads that are really desperate need. So, we concentrate on those over the next five or six years. We will arrive at catching up to the really bad roads in the next seven to eight years through the pavement preservation. And then at that time, we can, we can plan in advance before roads arrive at a, at that terrible deterioration that we're, we're addressing them.
And is the roller that's in the budget later, is that for preservation or is that just for repairs?
The, the.
The roller, the?
The roller, we do a lot of in-house work also. So, the roller is our compaction for those patches that we do.
Okay. Thank you.
And our roller is really, it's very old. So, we're just concerned that some point, it's not going to be repairable again. So, we're just getting, proactively getting it onto the, the plan.
Additional questions on roadways for George? Don't leave us yet, George. Additional questions? Are we all set on roadways? All right. We will move along to public facilities. George, anything you want to highlight on public facilities? And then we'll do questions.
On public facilities, we, basically, the public works buildings are, are one of the primary areas that we're addressing. And that public works yard began being constructed in the 1950s. The buildings had substantial structural issues that were starting, we were starting to see some failures in foundations. The roof, the roof replacement is now complete, near complete on, on the campus. So, obviously, avoiding water getting into buildings preserves the integrity of those buildings. The sheeting on the exterior of the buildings, which are texture 11 primarily, in some places, we were beginning to see sunlight from the inside. So, because the water that was filtering into the buildings from the roof was really starting to deteriorate those buildings. So, that, we've been working on a, Dimitri's been doing his magic on the not-to-exceed level basis. What, whatever funding we have each year, we work on our buildings to that level of funding that we, that we have the benefit of receiving from the council.
And can you just give us a highlight on the police headquarters? I know that the chief couldn't be here this evening, but if you could speak just briefly to the detective division renovation?
Sure. Let me just pull this up here. So, there also, we have, we have one large project. But beginning with the entrance to the building, we did receive a grant that Rena helped us acquire for lighting in the police department. That it will, that is, was not sufficient to do the entire building. So, we have some lighting and sealing in the plan here, which would allow us to pretty much upgrade the lighting in the entire police department. The large project is the detective division renovation.
And, and George, I'm going to interrupt. Assistant Chief Burns is here and I apologize. I did not even see him snuck in there behind Dave's head. So, feel free to come up as well. I apologize for not, not seeing you. You were hiding.
Yes, detective division renovation. Thank you. This is better repurposing of the space that we already have here in, within the building. When it was originally designed in the late 70s or so, well over 45 years ago, the business was entirely different. Our famous film developing room, a darkroom, it's unused space right now. So, what we wanted to do is make better use of the space that we have. We need additional desk space, evidence processing. We have electronic processing that we need. So, that's what we're looking to do, all within the space that we have right now.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on anything in the police headquarters? Any clarification needed? Okay. Thank you. All right, George, the other glaring one on here is obviously the senior center. So, do you want to speak to what's in there at a high level? Again, I would just caveat this with, we know that the referendum didn't pass. We know that we still have a current facility that is in need of significant work. And we, as a body, now have to make some decisions about next steps. So, I think keep that in mind as George speaks tonight about what's in there. Ultimately, it is, you know, the council who will have to decide what's next. And we'll, we'll be doing so over the next few months. But George, speak to what's in the plan, please.
Thank you. That was a great introduction. We will be, obviously, what, what I'm presenting in the plan, in the five-year plan, are the options, trying to quantify what the options are. And we will obviously be taking our direction from the council, who will tell us which direction we will be going. And the two, the two options are continue pursuing a new facility. And that, that would be with Priscilla, Hardy and Grace Church property. Or exploring, or saying that we're going to follow the path for renovate as new where we are. So, both of those come at a cost. The first one, the 275,000, that's in, I met with the designers that have helped us with the two, the Hardy Lane facility as well as the Main Street facility. And just trying to quantify, what would we need to advance something that would eventually be developed to a, a place where it would be a referendum? I, I assume, depending on the cost and the size and that sort of thing. So, $275,000 is what they said that we should carry as a budgetary. That's for, we've done extensive work on Hardy and Main Street. We have not done that, that level of the development and determination over on Priscilla Place. So, that's going to require traffic study, environmental studies, what we did at the other two locations. So, that's why that, that's a bit higher, the 275. The 225 is a number, a budgetary number that would allow us to engage a firm that would go in and first determine the structural viability of the building. What deficiencies does it have that have to be addressed? And come up with a, a preliminary design for the Priscilla Place. Because obviously, it's a 1920 grammar school. The spaces do not support the programming that has been developed by the building committee over the last 10 years. So, in order to, in order to arrive at a plan for a renovate as new, there would have to be all of those studies to develop schematics and bring a presentation to the council ultimately for a decision on funding. So, the first two lines that you see for seniors are, the first line would be, the higher one for studying a new building, if that's what the council says, we want to go new. And the second line is, we don't want to consider new. We want to look at renovate. That's the second one. Below there, we have, we've, we've put off renovations at the building, anticipating that there was going to be a positive outcome on a referendum for a new building. We didn't, I, we were hesitating, spending substantial money on the existing building that would then have been kind of wasted. So, we need to begin doing upgrades to, to the building. And that's with the restroom renovations and in general, interior renovation allowance down, down below. We've discussed with a couple of different construction companies, program managers. So, you can see that we provide square footage cost and estimates. So, the, so these are based on per square foot cost currently being experienced in the market. So, they're, they're basically broken out for you there, so you can see how we arrive at the numbers that we're calculating for a renovation. In a renovation, I know there was a lot of pushback. People saying it's impossible. You can't spend $20 million on a renovation. If you look at the numbers and you, and what we're basing it on, on unit cost, that's where we arrive. So, but that's a discussion for another night. Tonight, it's really just providing you information or putting it into a plan for consideration, so that later on, we can make decisions.
Thanks, George. Councilman Sutton?
Thank you, George. In the 10 years that we've had a building committee looking at this, there is, do we have any numbers together right now for a renovate as new at Priscilla Place?
Yes. And if you, if you add up the numbers that I have in '26, '27, '28, and we finish it up in '29, that would be a four-year phase. Because obviously, the building, we were trying to do it in a phased fashion. It ends up being around $20 million. There's site, there's site expansion. It's acquiring some of the homes on that street. So that when, because we're, the most requested component of the senior center by the seniors is the space that, for that inside activity, which is the box. Some people call it a gym. Some people call it a athletic space, whatever you want to call it. That box, which is estimated to be around 7,000 square feet, which is like two tennis courts. It's not a full basketball court, but that's pickleball, that's badminton, that's yoga, that's a million things. That's, you know, a three or four million dollar box. So, when you start adding the components, you quickly arrive at around $20 million. It's substantial.
Thanks, George.
And at the end of the day, it's 100, it's a 19. And at the end of the day, it's 100, it's a 1920 building, more than 100 years old.
Councilman Foreman?
Thank you. George, just thinking about this facility, have, has there been any consideration or anything to, about surveying the residents? Now this has failed, to better understand what was it that, that they didn't like? Campaigning, we heard, it's not big enough, it's too big enough, too big. It's got a pool, or it doesn't have a pool, the gym's not big enough, this, that, and the other thing, right? So before we go into the whole deep dive into the studies about the size, shape, and whether it should be here, there, or otherwise, maybe better understanding from the public. Did you vote for it? Yes, no, why not? And what was it that it had or didn't have that didn't appeal to you, or did appeal to you?
Yeah, Georgia, five A on that one. Councilman Foreman, I think those are all questions and considerations and conversations we need to have. Is that something we want to do? Is that the best path forward? Because I do think we all heard a variety of things, and we don't actually know, and it didn't pass by such a small margin. The town was split, 50/50. And so I think we owe it to ourselves to do a little bit of investigation into that for tonight. I think George is presenting us with a lot of options to keep in, so that the Board of Finance and the Town Council can make some one-year decisions. But again, as a body, we have, we have to figure out what our next steps are, and we'll be bringing some things forward over the next month or two, and hoping that all of us can really work together to figure out what's next, and whether we want to put $20 million, $21, $22 million into an existing facility, whether we want to do something else. But certainly, we'll be working with George and his team on that, too.
Good question.
All right, additional questions on facilities? We will move along to parks. George, same thing here, whether it's you or anybody else on your team, any highlights here before we go to questions?
Just let me, give me one second, let me just look here.
And if you'd rather us just jump into questions, we're happy to do that, too.
So I think some of the, you'll see a number of different ongoing initiatives, such as fencing and guardrail-type improvements at the parks, on, on the trails. We, we have during the seasonal issues with trees dropping limbs, or fall, entire trees wiping out sections on the rails to trails where there are safety rails. So we, Dimitri and his team are always in constant maintenance and replacement of those type of safety issues. The playscape at Beaches Park is, is the playscape that we have in the program this year, and we phase those out each year. The Beaches Memorial Park Playground has some serious deficiencies. It's completely end of life at this point. Last year, they bought the remaining replacement parts that are brackets and, and critical pieces from the manufacturer, and they said, we do not carry any, from this point on, we don't carry anymore. So the maintenance of that will become problematic in the very near future. They've been trying to identify options from other manufacturers that can possibly be retrofitted onto it in order to keep this playscape safe and operational, but it really is at end of life. And the, although the cost may appear to be something that's substantial, it's the, it's the typical cost. We, if, if you reach out to any of the manufacturers and installers, this is what the cost is for a playscape of that, of the size that we're replacing.
We'll pause there for playground questions. Councilman Dorsey, and then Councilman Malazi.
George, just a quick question. The Davido Park, is that off of Revere?
Which park?
Davido. Because when I look it up on, on Google Maps, it's near in front of my house, and I don't mind having a playground in front of my house, but I just wanted it to be, yeah.
Hi, everybody. Now, what was that question? Because I can't hear a thing back there.
So Davido Park?
Yes.
Is that the park off of Revere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, when I looked, I just wanted to get clarity.
Revere Lane, yes.
Thank you.
It is quite literally across from my driveway.
It actually cuts through my house to get there, so.
Yeah, come on by anytime.
Yeah. There is a jungle gym there, so what exactly is, what exactly needs to be repaired? I know, I always see.
Which, which playground are we speaking of?
Davido, off of Revere Lane.
So all of those playgrounds were put in approximately 18 years ago. They came in, like Davido and Island Brook, Tash, well, they were all put in at exactly the same time. There was a big initiative from the manufacturer that allowed the town to buy multiple playgrounds at a very discounted rate, and that's why they all went in at the same time. So they're reaching all end of life, but those are not the worst of the playgrounds. The playgrounds that are particularly problematic is what you see in front of you this year, which is Beaches. Beaches is, was designed at the time as a toddler, and before the Consumer Product Safety Commission kept changing the rules over time, intended to be an ADA accessible playground. And there are no others in our entire town, or at least on the park side, I should say, that even attempts to try to address mobility issues and things of that nature. So that's what it was 20 years ago. That playground is no longer remotely ADA accessible, it isn't suitable for the youngest of children. And I think George was saying that, forgive me, I'm going deaf, the, the equipment just isn't available anymore. We were buying any panel, anything, even if we didn't need it, because we know that they're just not going to be out there. We experience, you know, just plastic degradation, it's just falling apart. So we're, we're done with Beaches. Beaches price, though, is to truly try to make it ADA accessible. So you're dealing with, you know, different ramping and components, it's not just putting in a jungle gym or a, a set of swings. It's a different animal altogether. We, you know, we, we try to address the needs of the community, that, that's an underserved group in terms of what we're able to offer. So that's what we're hearing from the various manufacturers at the present time. And then we'll pursue, you know, various options, what, what suits, suits the town and what we can afford.
Thanks, Dimitri. Councilman Malazi?
Thank you, thanks, Dimitri. With regard to Beaches specifically, given that we just put in a brand-new sprinkler park, and it has a pool, has there been any discussion among your team of maybe just removing the playground that's there and declaring that there's enough other recreational opportunities at that parcel that doesn't require a new playground?
Well, I mean, I could always say yes, and I can always say no. What I just said in terms of that particular playground, there aren't any others in the, in the system. All the other playgrounds are really designed for age five and up, you know, were much more adventurous play. So trying to have something for toddlers and people with mobility issues, it doesn't exist. So we would have to create that space somewhere else, which would certainly be more costly. So that's where it was for the last 20 years. We're hoping to keep it right where it was.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Additional questions? Councilman Isaac, and then Councilmen Sather.
I'm just checking, the bid was $550,000. Did something else get added, like towards ADA from, from what had come in earlier?
Uh, forgive me in terms of how we ended up with the process, but we ended up with, in terms of the, the pricing process, when we just started actually getting some actual quotes, you know, bringing out various manufacturers out there, here's the space, give us something. Yeah, so that, that's where we were ending up with, with closer to $600,000 number, so. It's based on what we're, what's coming our way, or rather than just, we think it's about.
Should I get my rest of my parks out of the way now, or are we still on playgrounds?
Do you have a playground question? Let's do playground.
Sorry. So for, I have a couple things. So first of all, on this plan, you're saying that the 605 is just for Beaches this year?
That's right.
So then the next year, we'd go down to like Unity, and then Island Brook, like 2027 is Unity, sorry, yeah, and then Island Brook. Abraham Nichols doesn't have a playground?
Never had one.
Okay. And then, so that, and then, so you, correct me, the idea of the ADA sort of playground, is it sort of in the long lines of like what's in Milford, like Bodie's Playground, and Eisenhower Park, where it's accessible, wheelchair accessible and all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay, that's a.
It's a different animal.
Yeah, it's a big playground. Okay, thank you.
More playground? Councilman Wolf, playground? Okay, go ahead, and then we'll come back to Councilman Isaac.
Hi, Dimitri.
How you doing?
Good. I see the Mary Bill property on here. What's the, as, as you know, it's tight to get in there. It's just the one, like, what's, what's the, I know that's a design for this year, clearly we've spoken about, when Hillcrest goes up, there's going to be a field crunch. What's the thought process about, I don't know, 655,000 to develop the land, but getting in and out from a safety standpoint, or widening that, or?
So, you know, the, that main entry off of Huntington Turnpike, there, there is some room to the left and the right of that miserable little driveway that we're currently going in. Our property lines extend, I'm not going to say considerably further, but as you're entering in onto the right-hand side, we have some more room. I'd have to sit down with Will Vilmauer, which we have not to this point, to see how we can actually maximize that space. There will be a few other challenges getting over a culvert, but clearly, we would have to do something so we get better ingress, egress through Huntington Turnpike. This is a first step, essentially letting everybody know that it's the only almost parcel that we have that's, that's flat, that we could more rapidly convert into some sort of a playing field if, you know, the worst-case scenario, well, the worst-case scenario is going to happen. So it's, it's, it's just what the impact is going to be to our athletic community, excuse me, and whether or not we, we desperately are going to need that, and how quickly we can turn it into something usable.
How many acres do you think is on the property?
That, that field, are you talking about the field space itself? The field space itself is actually bigger than Indian Ledge 1, it's way bigger. It's, it's, it's a very large, flat parcel, and it hasn't been maximized by any means. That's just where we, where we stopped clearing, you know, the, I don't know if you know the history, I'm not going to bore you, but there was a lot of storms, it created a gigantic mess over there, and I got a, I got a lot of finger shaking at me when I, when I took out all of the garbage and debris and made it flat. And we stopped right where we were, because we really didn't have an urgent need to push it forward. I think that day has finally come, so we'll look at it, you know, we have to look at it prudently, but we also need to realize that there's, there is a need, and that's all we have.
My only other ask, Indian Ledge, in front of the main turf, there's no parking lines, it's like a free-for-all?
It'll get there.
Okay. Thank you.
You need not speak more. They will get there.
Just don't want cars banging into each other.
It's entertaining.
Never a good idea, never a good idea. Councilman Winchell?
For the Historical Society, is that the Barnes?
No. So the Historical Society that's listed over here is actually the Historical Society. So it is the.
What sort of work are you going to do there?
How do I describe this to you quickly?
I don't know.
The, the building is about 300 years old, or the main portion, it's rather old. And then at some point, I can't track it, and neither can they, there were additions put on to that main building. They're in extreme disrepair, and what we need to do at this point is to try to stop further deterioration of the other building. So one of the outer buildings, you could put your hand through the wall, through the outside wall, they had created an addition on what was a porch. There are no footings underneath that thing, and what lies beyond it is a stone, rubblestone wall, which is a part of the original building. So our proposal is to see if we can take out as much of that addition as we can, and try to stabilize the outside wall of the real 300-year-old building. And if funding is, is available, then put that piece back on. But we really need to stop the water from getting into the, you know, the, the oldest portion of that, and try to stabilize it. Not too many 300-year-old buildings left in Trumbull.
Right.
All right, Councilman Isaac, you're up.
Batter up.
I watched your last meeting, I was the one, for the Parks and Rec. You were talking about the.
Poor thing.
Yeah, I know. You were, well, I wanted to hear your geo- thermal system discussion, but you were talking about the court field, and behind that, perhaps putting a field that you'd been wanting to do that for some time?
Did I say that?
You did. And, but I'm just wondering, as opposed to working on the Bills' property at this point, since we still have a senior center in flux of locations and decisions, would it be easier, more convenient for students and town to develop that field? Is it same cost, less?
I would not say same cost, that would not be true. I think Bills is, on, on some level, will be less expensive to develop a functioning field, but that's all that it really is. Just some of the, the concepts that we were bouncing around, because we are very concerned about what the impact of the Hillcrest development is going to be. We just got a text today that they're going to start doing the geothermal wells, they're going to be doing drilling starting this week. So it's, it's commencing, and so from here on out, we're going to start to incrementally lose field space. I think that if there was, you know, a group of people that could sit down and understand the cost-benefit analysis of potentially developing that section, there's, in my opinion, I think it, it plays out that there's enough space there to, to develop that corner, and essentially flip the field space. So what you're losing on the Hillcrest side, we essentially put it on the other side of the campus, either right out of the gate, or incrementally. But the space is there, and it, it maintains that, the functionality of the campus. We've worked very hard over the years at, at trying to develop, you know, everybody wants a contiguous, contiguous space, it's convenient, it's functional, you can get the, you know, you can maximize it. We don't want to go on the road, it's problematic, but at this point, we really don't have any resources to even entertain it, other than my imagination.
Okay, and then last, the, I was surprised that the Great Oaks Park is either still on or back on. I know that last budget season, the Board of Finance cringed at the amount, and then the discussion of deep process with removal of the bridges and, and all the planking and everything, and that you wouldn't be able to construct because of wetlands the same way, and so it was removed. So I'm just curious if that's just kind of being left in as grant potentials, or?
You know, we, it, it just doesn't go away. I'm, I'm actually very surprised, and I don't think I'm surprised by much anymore, but that there are that many people that continuously bring up Great Oak Parks. They really do enjoy those, those boardwalks. I'm, I'm happy that I made somebody excited with something, but shoot.
I just need to add, my mom came into town from New Jersey, she's a big bird watcher.
Sure.
I'm going to have to have her watch this now. And she, where did she go in town? I told her, oh, go over the rail trail, and she ended up at Great Oaks Park without any prompting.
Yeah.
And she said what a beautiful park it was. She did mention the bridges, so.
The, the, look, I mean, look, it, that number is, you know, when we're facing so many budgetary, you know, burdens, quite frankly, it's, it's hard to wrap your head around it. It's, it's a complicated process at this point to put it back. On the other hand, what it was, what it is, what it is capable of being, is, it's a remarkable space. There are a lot of remarkable spaces, and that's why that was chosen. When you could walk across those wetlands from one end to the other in the middle of spring, or whatever, it's, it is a remarkable experience. Unfortunately, I just, you know, I realized the, you know, the burdens, and that one may have to wait for another day. It's not going away, we're just not going to be able to walk on it any, you know, anytime soon.
We can also hide a Nikki's mom on, on Trumbull Community Television. We can also hide a Nikki's mom on, on Trumbull Community Television. Councilman Buzzell, go ahead.
Hi, Dimitri.
Hey, dude.
How much land do we own behind the cork field? I, I was always under assumption that it was probably state-owned, but how much do we own compared to what is state-owned, the further back we go behind the cork?
You don't hit state. You hit Beaches Park before you do anything else. And that, we're, we're, we're friends, so we can have that conversation.
Councilman Cento.
Hi, Dimitri.
Hey, Tony.
What is, in unity, the pedestrian crossing to, what's PTR or PRT?
Yeah.
Yeah, Aquanic River Trail.
Okay. Just curious. And last question is Katz's Pond Design and Permanent Instruction. Isn't that the pond where they're building the first responders? Didn't they dredge that already?
That would be the one.
What's that?
Bill here? Oh, William. Entrez-vous, si vous plaît.
Katz's, Katz's Pond?
Yeah.
The dredging.
I thought they already did that.
No, we did the study. We did the study. We have, we have a big-ticket item for removing the beryllium that's, they found, and the dredging cost has gone exponentially higher.
So, the dredging is going to cost more than a whole building?
Probably.
Interesting. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Dan, are you good? Okay. Are there any other questions on park improvements? Okay. Thanks, Dimitri.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, we're going to move along to Fleet. George, are you going to do the Fleet update, or would you like to invite?
I'm going to invite some of our team to, uh...
That sounds good.
...take over this.
And I know we have our EMS team here, too, so if there's questions around the Mobile Command Center. No, sorry, the ambulance. Not the Mobile Command Center.
Let's go.
Anybody who'd like to come up. In fact, if you all want to do ambulance first, so that you don't have to stay any longer.
What?
I know you enjoy our meetings, bird watching and all. Anything on those first two lines that you want to share, and then we'll do any questions on those two?
Just, you know, we work with Fleet. We try to have a robust vehicle program. The ambulances that we have get a lot more use than an average vehicle. I would say extreme use, along with idling hours, harsh braking. I mean, I would say harsh acceleration, but if you've ever tried to accelerate a 14,000-pound square, it doesn't really go that fast. But they do get a lot of wear and tear, and the one that we have listed here would be, with lead times and everything, would be approaching its ninth-year service, over 100,000 miles, which you could probably double or triple that for a regular car. So, that's in there for this year. What I got for that.
Any questions on ambulance? And is that a nine, 10-year lifespan, a typical?
With a robust maintenance program, which we have, yes. If we, had we not had that, then we'd be looking at, you know, a six-to-seven-year replacement.
Okay. Questions on that? No? Okay. Anything on the Mobile Command Center? I know that's a year out, but...
I don't think that's on my, uh, my list.
All right. Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it. All right, Aaron, the floor is all yours. Anything you'd like to highlight here?
Well, we wanted to replace some vehicles that are getting older and starting to, you know, show their age, especially plow trucks. You know, the highly corrosive and abusive, and it's, you know, they just have to keep going and going and going in, you know, times where most people would put things away and not use them. So, there's that. And I know we've been limping along a garbage truck for quite some time, and, you know, moving forward, we're looking at changes in the EPA on the big engines for trucks. They're going to implement some drastic changes, which we're worried once they start these new engines, the first year, working the bugs out of it, how things really work. We kind of want to get in front of that and either be able to buy one before they make these changes, and it's 2027.
2027 model year. It's going to start with the new emission standards on the trucks. It's a complete redesign of the engines, because they want an 80% reduction in some of the fines that come out of the motors. So, it's a brand-new series of engines. So, all our conventional motors, with all our diagnostic equipment, becomes obsolete from model year 2027 moving forward. So, that we need all-new diagnostic equipment for these, and all-new training for our mechanics to be able to maintain these things. So, we're trying to load our fleet with everything, with all our diagnostic equipment that works currently, and then we will hopefully kind of miss the first model year of these new engines when they come out, and hopefully, they can work the bugs out before we get any of these and have to purchase all the rest of the specialty equipment to work on them. So, this is one of the big things. It's going to be in our plow trucks that are in the budget. We're staying on track for our plow truck replacement, because of the corrosion, everything that Aaron had mentioned, and also our garbage truck. We pushed it out a couple of years to make it work, but it is coming to the end of the life. It really needs to get replaced. And that is the one that does the heavy lifting on our bulk pickup program. It also contributes to our leaf collection program for bag leaves and everything in between. So, that truck works nine months a year.
Then the only other thing I had for Fleet was the replacement of a lift in our shop. I'm, I'm sure it's from the early 60s. It's the last of the original lifts that were in the building. They predate my time there. I'm sure they predate Richie's time. As a matter of fact, we've just recently taken it out of service because it's just gotten to a point where we can't predict how it's going to go up and down. It gets to a certain height and then ramps up, and then the car or truck bounces, and the same thing...
That sounds really safe.
...coming down. So, yeah, we've since tagged that out, and so, I have a replacement in there. Unfortunately, there are some constrictions with the building where we can't go with an above-ground lift, which tend to be a little less expensive. We have to replace an existing in-ground lift with a newer in-ground lift because of doorways and, and heights. So, we're kind of stuck there.
Okay. Are there questions on any of the Fleet line items? Councilman Cologne.
Hi, I think you guys got two new trucks last year. Where do they factor into your schedule? And then, I remember someone talking about the interchangeable parts, and I saw you had the plow attachment. I don't know if that was a new piece last year, or if there was something that you were using.
So, if you're referring to the plow attachment that is in here, it's a new high-lift blade that goes on our smaller plow truck. So, we had purchased a smaller, a smaller-profile plow truck to handle the small areas like Maple Heights, behind the town hall over here, et cetera. But the plows that they have on those trucks are traditionally straight plows. We found over the years that we need high-lift plows, especially when we get a lot of snow to be able to windrow them up high enough. This is a specialized plow that we add to that truck, so that we can get the snow up higher, and we can do the plowing.
Is that on the new truck that you got last year?
That is on the new truck that we got last year, yeah. We're in, we are going to upgrade that plow assembly on that truck. It's specialized. You can't even purchase it with the truck.
Thank you. Additional questions on Fleet? Seeing none? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
That moves us along...
If I may, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Just one thing. One item I didn't point out that's on the, in the facilities, is the fueling station. The fueling station that the town has at the DPW complex, that was actually a donation from, I believe it, Connects?
Connects.
Connects Garage. So, they, they swapped that out 20 years ago, and it was old when they swapped it out, that they were replacing their pumps. We are, last year, we had one of the pumps go down, and they had to actually fly parts in from a scrapyard out in the Midwest, because parts aren't made for those anymore. Our first responders, fire, police, school buses, the entire fleet, the DPW trucks, plows, everything, everyone fuels at that fueling station. So, it's the heart of the town. Out of everything that you have before you, to me, that's the one item we absolutely have to fund. We have no choice. It's at end-of-life. We have a full design, and it's, it's something that we'll put ahead of every, everything else if we're asked. What's your number-one priority?
Okay, George, and that's public facilities, under Public Works Yard, the renovation of the town fueling station, which is in for 1.7 million.
Right.
Did I see a hand in the corner? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move along to other, with the economic development and engineering.
Sure. So, economic development.
There's really only, you know, a few things in for 2026.
Yes. The $50,000 is to close the gap on the, the state funding that we received for that, that project. When it went out to bid, there was a shortfall of $50,000. That, that closes it. And we have, how much in grant?
Let's close the gap in the proposed budget for the state.
So, it has been, and we have grant money of how much?
Yeah, I mean, we have a 20% match.
Okay. So, this is part of the 20% match, and I'm, to correct myself, it has not gone to bid. It's the probable cost. So, this is to close the gap on what that project is going to cost. The pedestrian, bike pedestrian master plan, that's something that Rena had applied for a grant. We're still not sure exactly where that is, but they're, they're working on that. And then the town hall, the town, the Long Hill Schoolhouse renovation, there's a committee working on, on that project. That was located near Echo, up on the hill. They took, they actually took the entire schoolhouse building down. They, they have that stored, and this is to reinstall that behind the library, and it would become a functional space that can be a small meeting hall, and, and it would be basically an addition to the library. And it, we're working, this is a project that the Trumbull Historical Society is working on and doing the fundraising for.
And that 200,000, Rena had said they were actively working on a significant amount of fundraising, but some of the grants obviously require a match, and, and so, the desire to have that funding in. Are there any questions for George on any of the economic development projects there? Councilman Malazi?
With regard to the Whitney Trailhead, are we trying to expand the parking there? Because to my knowledge, there's only about 10 parking spaces there. Is there even space to do more with that?
Yes, we have a, we have a project to actually put, put a sidewalk in over there and to change the parking arrangement and to put a cul-de-sac at the end.
So, it's to change it, because there's really no, you can't go further, right? There's no more space. It's just to reimagine the space.
No, but it's just managing the space better.
Thank you.
State of engineering.
All right. Anything else on economic development? Otherwise, Bill, if you want to jump into engineering, anything there that you want to highlight?
Ongoing bridges and culverts, as usual. This year, we've used some of the money from these, these funds for emergency repairs to culverts that were in bad shape and needed to be emergency repaired. Driftwood and Monitor Hill, to name, to name two, but this is, you know, they come up, they need to get fixed.
Okay, thank you. Questions on any of the engineering lines? Councilman Isaac?
On the first two, for 209.50, they had kind of been historically 100 and 800. Is that, is that more of a, because of the infrastructure that's aging, and so, it is more of the repair work?
So, the, the culvert design and construction ongoing refers to some projects that we already had in queue. Park, Park Street, Hedgehog, Harvest Hill, and those, those have already been in the plan. The, the upper line, the 200,000, is basically newer stuff going in.
Okay, so it's more, so it's not that there's more repairs coming down that you're taking it from?
There's 267 culverts in town, and you can pick any one.
Okay.
I mean, currently, we are working on Edison, Edison Road and Williams Road. We're working on those culverts right now. There'll be more action in those in the spring, because we've come at the end of the season.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. And then, that brings us to our enterprise accounts, WPCA and Tashua, Tashua Knowles Golf.
WPCA, we keep everything flowing, and this is an ongoing plan.
All right, so we'll just jump into any questions on WPCA. Okay. And anything on golf? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who came this evening. George, anything else from you? Are you all set?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Okay, we appreciate all the work that goes into this. So, we have a resolution on the floor, TC 31-04. Are we ready to vote on this? Mr. Mecca will be right back. I mean, I have no words. We'll give him, we'll give him 10 seconds, and then we're going to vote on this one. Any sightings? All right, listen, we're, we're going to vote on this one. All in favor of TC 31-04, the five-year plan? All right, any opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Mecca? All right, and do I have a motion to adjourn? Who was that? Was that Councilman Dorsey and Councilman Sutton? All right, all in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone. If we don't see...